Good evening. At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. The Marshall City Council continues to operate under the COVID pandemic guidelines. So a portion of the council is connected at this meeting by distance. So I will call on City Clerk Kyle Box to take the role of the council members.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Meister. Don Edblum.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
And we do have a quorum of the council present. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move then to Agenda I number two, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on April 13th, 2021. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time? Move approval?
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister. Excuse me. John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. The, we'll move then to the first of four public hearings that we'll have this evening. The first public hearing is a public hearing on the request to move a dwelling to a residential district. The location is 416 Brussels Court. The, um, this was called, the public hearing was called for at the last regular council meeting. I will call on Ilya Gutman from their city department of building and inspection. I would also note that the applicant is present at the council meeting. Ilya.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is the request to move the house to the corner of Brussels and Vienna. And the house currently is located just outside of town and Curtis Van Koon checked on the house, did inspection and said that it's in pretty good condition. So technically it's suitable for moving into town. So the question in front of the council is not about technical issues, though. It's about how it fits into the neighborhood. If you look at the map, you can see there are really no other houses next to this location, and there are not many houses around at all. So since it's kind of appearance question, Steph doesn't have any recommendation and just defer it to council to make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Ilya Gutman. Is there any input as part of the public hearing on the moving of this dwelling into this location?
Just note that this came before the EDA at our last meeting regarding the purchase of the lot, and the EDA did approve the purchase pending action of the council and on this action of moving the house.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Ilya.
Yes.
I have a question. Is this house going to have the same conditions as the last one that was moved in, where new windows, new siding? So the exterior is all brought up to?
Yes. I believe that's what I was told. Yes.
Yeah, because that one turned out very nice. It fits into the neighborhood very nice. So if it's handled that way, it'll fit into the neighborhood very nicely.
Yeah, I believe it has to, it is going to have new roof, new siding and new windows. The owner can confirm.
If you want to say it. If you want to. The applicant who's present did indicate that that is their plan, new siding, new roof, new windows. Any other input from the council? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, we will move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. And then the action would be then to allow the dwelling to be moved into the residential district at 416 Brussels Court. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to the second public hearing. This is a public hearing on the adoption of the ordinance amendment related to the placement of shipping containers within the city and some other minor miscellaneous ordinance revisions. Once again, I will call on Ilya Gutman to conduct this public hearing. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is about shipping containers. That was, this issue was brought up in front of the council and someone asked for the variance to install a shipping container somewhere along Main Street. The current ordinance doesn't allow any shipping containers to be installed in residential and business districts. It allows them in industrial districts. So the concern was that maybe, it may be allowed under certain conditions. So Steph looked at that thing and we end up with making it easier. Yes, now the new ordinance, the way it is revised, will allow installation of single shipping container in a general business district by a conditional use permit. There are certain conditions that have to be met, and of course, it will have to go through the planning commission and the council in each case separately. It will only apply to general business B3 zoning districts. It will still be, of course, permitted in industrial districts and still will be prohibited in residential districts and also some business districts like B1 and B2. There was some discussion about condition in the last council meeting, and we looked at that and the idea of all this, all conditions for any condition used is to mitigate the negative impacts of any installation, any permanent given. So we're trying to combine it with the reasonable opportunity for people to do that. And in reality, it gives applicants plenty of ways of complying with the ordinance. They may have it behind the buildings. They may have it behind the fence. They may have it behind some green barrier. So it should not be, or of course, they can make it, have it far away from the streets or residential district. So that's, it is flexible enough for people to be able to, relatively easy to do that. As I said last time, there will still be several containers in town which would not meet those requirements currently, and they will have to be looked at later.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. We will open it up for input as part of this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Jim.
I have a quick question. Conditional use permits go with the property, correct?
Correct.
So if this gets issued to property owner, and since Quinn's here, I'll use him as an example. If this gets issued to Quinn Horvath, and he sells that property to Jim Lozinski, that conditional use permit then transfers to Jim Lozinski, correct?
Correct. So long as all the conditions are met. So.
Should we, maybe instead of having this offered under conditional use, is there a better way to do this? So when the owner, when that person sells a property, that that could be forced to be removed? I'm trying to think of like a temporary, there's, I can't think of what, what, um, it wasn't conditional use permits, but there's another permit we've looked into the issue to do that.
Yes, there is an interim use permit right now.
There you go.
Which will allow this.
Off to do this as an interim use permit, so we don't end up with a shipping container that's always suddenly 75 years old, that's transferred from owner to owner, instead of a conditional use permit, so it's not always tied to that property?
That may be possible. I didn't review that possibility, but it is, I believe it might be possible to put a condition that it goes away with the sales of the property on the interim use permit. Unless the city attorney says otherwise, I would say yes, it is possible.
Dennis, you want to weigh in on that?
If you define it as an interim use permit, not a conditional use permit.
Correct. Yes, yes. I'm talking about interim use permits.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering, why do we care? Why would, why would we do that? I mean, if it's still meeting the condition and, I mean, you could play it the other way. What if the buyer purchaser wants that because they're going to continue to use the property similar? They're just changing ownership and not use, and the container is, has a value and use for them also, and now we're, we enforce them to take it out, that's, and come back and do it over again?
Well, and that's part of it, Craig. You're correct. We make that new owner come back to understand the, the requirements to leave that container there. So they have to apply for their own interim permit, and now they're responsible for, you know, you, you're actually hit the nail on the head. That is correct. I think every owner should have to apply for it. I don't have a problem with it, but I don't want a container, you know, I always say other towns look so nice, and Marshall looks nice too, don't get me wrong. But they have these ordinances in there, so they have more control over that, that I, I think this is a good spot where interim use permit, and the sale of a property can easily transfer an interim use permit too. I think it's once, once it's there, it won't be hard to, to transfer. But I think that would be a good opportunity, take a look at the use of the container at that time. I'd be much more apt to support an interim use permit than a conditional use permit.
I guess I, I'm a little frustrated that we treat these as, oh, they're infectious, because then at that point in time, I mean, what if somebody has a problem with the, with the utility sheds, these portable utility sheds that people are buying and putting down? I mean, why would we treat one thing that meets our condition with one owner treated differently if the ownership changes? The, the container doesn't change. I just, I just think sometimes we get a little too deep into people's personal business, and this is kind of one of those steps that I, I guess I don't agree with.
Mayor Burns, can I, can I have Kyle?
Go ahead, run.
Can I have Kyle forward the document to letter F, please? Kyle? It says right there that everything's not allowed as a permanent storage. So Councilman Lozinski, we're extending this to 180 days maximum. So the transfer of property is, is not a moot, it's a moot point, right? Because we're extending in a permit for 180 days maximum. Nothing can be put in there as a permanent storage.
Correct, but it's possible to change that condition. Since we are talking about interim use, it's possible to change the terms, I believe. Again, I didn't look at this thing, but it may be possible to change the term. Instead of 180 days, it may be until the owner, until the sale of the property.
Let's use Quinn Horvath again and say Quinn wants to put a storage container on his parking lot, and he wants it there for, and he has it there for five years. Can he have it there for five years?
So Ilya, to put it, what you said a little differently, the, you can leave it there for 180 days as an interim, but as a conditional use permit, it would be there permanently if that conditional use permit was granted.
What, what I was going to say is basically, yes, correct. If it's a condition use permit, it may, it will be permanent. However, if instead of having it a conditional use, we have it as a different interim use permit, we can change the conditions and description here in the ordinance and allow the council to have, change it to the, instead of 180 days to, until the property sells. Again, I haven't looked at how it will be written. I haven't looked at how it will sound, but in general, I think it's possible. I will have to, of course, take a look at it again and redo it.
Your summary, Mayor, was correct. It's either an interim permit with 180 day limit or a conditional use permit that stays with the property. F is just an option in the ordinance for not going for a conditional use permit for a more permanent set, and it's going as an interim set which has less of a hurdle to get over. The other piece of this, though, is I, I just feel like we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. If we issue a conditional use permit, we put conditions on that use, and part of that is, is visible. So we're actually asking for double protection by making them paint them a acceptable color and then telling them they have to screen them. I mean, it's like, it just, to me, it's, I, I, I just think that we either decide that we're going to allow them looking decent, or we're not. Because if I get a, if I get an eight foot or a nine foot container, if I get an eight foot container, I can't fence it. Because I can only put up a seven foot fence without coming in and getting an, a, now I can't even think of getting a variance to put up a higher fence. So we're going to require something that our ordinance doesn't allow. So we're just pushing the ball. I mean, I just, I think we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist, and, you know, we, we talk about, and then we're going to get into the shells and mays, and that's going to create another dialogue that we're going to have here. And I just, I just think we're, we're creating a, we're anticipating a problem that this started with somebody coming in wanting to do something the right way, and brought to light things that we've allowed to happen in probably a lot less of an acceptable condition than was proposed to do that started this conversation in the first place. And now, you know, I don't even want to go fix what's not compliant until we get this in order, because to go talk to those other businesses and property owners, I don't even know what to tell them to do. Because, you know, we can't even figure out what we want here.
Mayor, may I speak?
Go ahead, John.
Okay, the discussion we did have regarding this, we did talk about the height of the fence and realizing that the standard fence is going to be less than the, the storage container. And that was recognized, I believe. The idea is to really break the view of the container. And to me, you know, we don't put those conditions in because of the applicant. We put those conditions in because of the residents around them and the, the view from the road. If those two cases are met, if they're within view of a residence, or they're in view of a road, then we're asking that there be some covering. And that covering could be a fence, it could be brush, it could be a number of different things. And we're also asking that the unit be maintained. And I don't see either one of those as being extraordinary or out of line to ask that for the benefit of the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, so, so using hypotheticals and to drag this out a little longer. So I'm driving over the County Road 33 Bridge over the railroad tracks, and Schwan's has a permit to have one of these down in the corner down there. How high is the fence then, so I can't see it off the bridge?
Actually, they are so industrial. It's so acceptable.
Yeah, they're in industrial, so it fits into their zoning.
This only applies to story, or storage containers that are in the business district. So it's nothing in the commercial or the residential side. It's only a business district.
Okay, other, other input?
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Councilman Schaefer, because I think we're trying to make a mountain out of a molehill here. I think, you know, going back a couple of years, businesses complained that it was hard to do business with the city, and I think this is going to create one of those issues again. And I just can't see that this is a good move for the city.
Um, and we'll, we'll take Monty who applied for this. Everybody seems to forget that Monty is backed right up to residential property. So is it fair for him to set that container there with no screening back right up to somebody's backyard?
He had permission from him. He had, he had permission from all of those residents, Jim. And his, and the other area is, the other area is not a, the other area is not a public facility. It's a private parking lot owned by the school district.
But he does not have permission from all those residents. I know that for a fact, because my parents live next to him.
Okay, other input?
Can I just add? The last time I spoke to Monty, and I'm not implying that this ordinance revision is to appease one business owner, but he does not plan on moving forward with a storage container with revised or new ordinance language, with or without new ordinance language. He's, he's going to make alternate plans for some other way to accommodate his needs. So I just want to say that, even though we are not doing this for one business owner, I, I understand that, but just thought I'd share that.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Any other input?
Mr. Mayor, my last question to Ilya. If we adopt this ordinance, how do we enforce the ones that are existing around town?
I believe at some point, definitely after the COVID pandemic is over, we will have to go through town and look at what's there and send letters. Alternative to that, of course, is to wait until someone complains, which usually, that's what the city staff does, wait until someone complains.
Thank you, Ilya. Any other input? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I so move.
Motion by Craig's. Is there a second? Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote on closing the public hearing. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We will now consider the adoption of the ordinance that was the subject of the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance as written.
Motion by John. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Don, did you make that second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, the motion on the table is the adoption of the ordinance as presented at the public hearing. We'll move to a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
No.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
No.
And the motion does not prevail. I'd entertain an alternate motion.
I'd like to make an alternate motion that makes three adjustments to the ordinance. One is that it, that the city may require screening. Number two is that it be limited to 340 square feet, the container, because there could be two 20 foot, depending on how the lot lays, set side by side, as long as they're hard attached, not to exceed that 340 square feet, or one 20, or standard width by 40 feet. The third is that there, that it's painted and, and maintained with that reasonable color. So I want to make sure those three things are in the ordinance, that the word is, is may and not shall, that they be maintained and that they have a maximum square footage of 340.
Okay, Kyle, you have that motion down. Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
Craig, I have a question. Would you amend your motion if we also include it as an interim permit that expires with each owner? And I would support the motion then, just so we can relook at it every time.
Sure. Yeah, I can go with that.
Okay. Then I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Dennis, do you want to make any comments on the, we had a public hearing on one ordinance. There's been, what I would say is three fairly minor changes to the ordinance, and one more substantive change. Is that still allowable by, with the public hearing that we had?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now, discussion on the motion.
It's just clarification on, first of all, on the interim versus the conditional use, that the interim would continue on essentially to, as long as the ownership of the lot or the ownership remains the same. Is that the intent?
That would be my intent, yes.
And mine also. And the thought is, is that if the property transferred and the new owner wished to continue the container, they would just simply come back and reapply for an interim permit that would, that would fall, that would cover them, and they would have to meet the same conditions.
Correct. I agree with that.
And I think that's, that's reasonable. It's just one more step. It's, you know, it, it's, gives us the ability to make sure that the containers aren't blighted.
However, there would still be that interim usage of 180 days or less.
Right.
Without the application for the interim conditional use permit.
We're not asking to change part F.
Okay.
Well, the, the permanent would be an in, by an interim permit, not a conditional use permit. Right.
Exactly.
Yep.
Right. But if there was a, a short-term use, say, for construction or whatever, that would still be allowable?
Yeah.
Okay, other discussion on the motion.
One other clarification question, please. In regards to the changing of shall to may, just clarification, who makes that decision?
Would, that would be the city council on the application as they reviewed the conditional use permit.
Right.
Okay, based on recommendations from either staff or planning and zoning, is that my understanding? That would be my understanding on this.
I thought you were making the, the change in the ordinance itself.
It is. Right.
Yeah, then, then it's made, and, yeah. And it goes through, all those permits go through the planning commission before they come to us for their recommendation. The, the issue with that is, is shall, to me, is an absolute. That means that you, you will screen it irregardless. This way, it's looked at with a case by case if it needs it or doesn't need it. I'm not arguing that one side of, of the, the original proposal, and I don't want to name names because he's not, he's not part of this. They were not acting on his particular application. But there may have been one portion of that to be screened, but you could envision a scenario where they'd have to screen all the way around it. At that point in time, I would attach a fiber like wood to the outside of the container, and I would fix lattice to it, make the container the fence, and there I solved it. I mean, it's, it, I have another analogy, but I'll save it because it's not fit for public feeding, but it's frustrating to me.
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, I, I'm just trying to understand the changes. Who, who makes the decision as far as the may? Is that, so it could become from a recommendation from the planning and zoning, or in addition by city council? Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, other discussion on the motion. Everyone understands the motion. Go ahead.
Mayor, would, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, would it make sense to table this and send it back to committee and let them just iron out these final details?
Well, we do have a motion on the table, table, the.
I'm not sure what else we'd iron out.
Yeah, I said the committees, John and I, and I seconded it, and John, if you support it, I mean, we're two of the three people on the committee.
Yeah.
You just have, you have to make sure you're going to address the existing containers.
That'd be city staff, yes.
Yeah. And I think, and I think that we're going to make it easier for staff to do that now that we've given them, this gives it direction on what's expected of these, with these containers.
Okay, other, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, that's a good example. I have an interim permit, because there's a big box store that has these that, I don't want to necessarily give that property a, a conditional use permit, but it gives them an interim permit. So when they happen to close, we don't end up with four containers sitting there because. but it gives them an interim permit, so when they happen to close, we don't end up with four containers sitting there because they fit into the conditional use permit.
Hey, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Thank you for the, the discussion. We'll move then to agenda number five. This is a public hearing on a home property tax abatement request, the location 905 Elizabeth Street. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. Uh, the last council meeting, the city council called for a public hearing to be held, which is tonight. In the background information, you can see the, uh, the breakout for the difference of improvement, as well as the estimated amount of, um, assistance that's going to be provided to that property over the next two years. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. As part of the public hearing, are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, just one question for Kyle. In our packets, I see we have 905 Elizabeth Street and 903. Are they, is this house going to be built over two lots, and so they're just asking for the abatement on one?
I believe that is correct, yes. The homestead will be on 905.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? Or other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote to close the public hearing. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. Then the second action here would be to consider the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement. Questions about? Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number six. This is a public hearing on regarding the business tax abatement request for Ray Camp Horbath Funeral Home. Once again, I'll call on Kyle Box to conduct this public hearing.
I will turn, have Lauren Dykes.
Okay, we'll have Lauren Dykes conduct this public hearing. Lauren?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I am here to introduce the abatement for Quinn Horbath, who is also on the line with us this evening. Uh, he recently completed a $2.1 million project, a new 8,000 square foot facility, uh, which opened in November of 2020. And we're here tonight requesting abatement. We're doing a basic four-year, um, 80, 60, 40, 20. And in the packet, you'll see more information on the project. I do see in the resolution, we have one update that we would need to make, uh, pending approval, which is just the 3.05, which has the, an incorrect estimate on it, but other than that, everything else should be correct within your packet. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Lauren. Are there any, any questions or input as part of the public hearing?
Lauren, just a question for you or either Quinn. I see the abatement starts in 2023. Is there a reason for that?
Um, I had the abatement worked up by Dave Parsons. I'm not sure why we had to start on 2023. Typically, we start the commercial abatements, um, the first full year in operation, so that would be 2021. But I think because we're maybe, maybe doing a delayed abatement, um, since the project is already completed, that might have been where his estimate started.
Sure.
Then the taxes would be due then, 2021 would be due 2022?
Correct.
It, it's all based on the tax valuation cycle, and what staff do to benefit the property owner is ensure that the maximum amount of property taxes can be abated. So the, the full valuation taxable, I'm probably not saying this right, starts in 2023. And that's, that's likely why it started at that year rather than 2021.
So it'll be the payable 2023 valuation, uh, determined in year 2022, 2022, based on the construction that was completed in 2021. Okay, does that make sense, John?
Yeah, so the, the assessment, I mean, the review of the property value, if it was still in, under construction, would be less for payable in 2022 than it would be in 2023.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
I, I will add, I, I, as well, uh, even though the policy currently allows abatement after construction for this particular year, uh, the city did have discussions with, um, Quinn in 2019, well before construction started on the, on the commercial tax abatement. So the official, um, closing of that application did not occur until this year, but really the initial application started in 2019.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not?
We close the public hearing.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second? Close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion to close the public hearing. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the resolution that would approve the business tax abatement.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Quinn, one final word on this. Congratulations on your, uh, your investment in the community. We, uh, appreciate, um, your business, your investment, and your involvement in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Burns, and thank you, everybody else. I appreciate all you do.
We'll move then to the consent agenda, bringing the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. They improved, consider the approval for a transient merchant license for TNT fireworks, calling for a public hearing regarding a proposed, uh, property tax abatement at 1107 Slate Street. Consider the approval of the 2021, 22, uh, 22, uh, township fire contracts. Consider the approval of payment to France Communications for the low voltage wire work at City Hall. We have a, um, payment invoice at the wastewater treatment facilities for Bolton and Ming. Consider the maintenance agreement with Neo Electric Solution for the malls are at the airport. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda? Any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number 14, consider the approval for the recommendation for the Marshall Aquatic Center Design Architectural and Engineering Services. I will call on, uh, Scott Vandermel on this agenda item. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. Um, as stated in your background information, exactly three months ago today, council approved the RFP process for Design Architectural and Engineering Services for the Marshall Aquatic Center. Shortly thereafter, a selection committee was established and began reviewing the submitted proposals. The city received significant interest in our project, as demonstrated by the number of submissions. The selection committee met multiple times, um, reference checks were conducted, and with the recommendation of Councilman and Selection Committee Member Lozinski, site visits to comparable-sized communities took place as well. As Councilman Meister shared with me earlier today, due diligence has been done with this process. With that being said, the recommendation we bring forward to you tonight, pending city attorney review of the agreement for professional services, is to approve the proposal submitted from Stockwell Engineers Incorporated to begin phase one of this project. Both John Brown and David Locke with Stockwell have joined us tonight. And with your permission, Mayor Burns, I'd like to introduce John, who is the president of the firm, and have him speak briefly as to what Stockwell is about and how they will work with our community to guide us through this project.
Thank you, Scott. John Brown here with Stockwell Engineers. Um, I would like to introduce our firm. I, we appreciate this opportunity. Stockwell Engineers has been around, uh, for, for right at 40 years now. We have focused our professional services on municipal government, infrastructure planning, infrastructure improvement projects of all sorts. We are, we are landscape architects, civil engineers, and land surveyors. And we've been involved with projects such as this, uh, for many years within our company. Uh, I've also brought with me, uh, David Locke, who will be the project manager of this project, and he will lead the, the design group and your leaders through the process. Uh, my experience with the company has been, since I graduated from college in 1991 and joined Stockwell Engineers, I, uh, spent my entire career here and was able to, uh, fortunately buy into the company at, at a young age and was able to expand and grow the company. We're excited about this project. I'm gonna introduce, uh, David Locke here. He is our project manager for this project, and, um, he'll give a short introduction about himself, and we'd open it up to any questions after that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is, uh, David Locke, landscape architect with Stockwell. Uh, and I'm got almost 15 years of experience in working on, uh, parts and rec in Aquatic Center projects. Uh, we're excited about this opportunity, uh, and being able to, to meet the community and the members of the staff and move forward, uh, with this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, everyone. Um, Scott, do you have anything more, or Preston, are you gonna add anything?
Not at this time.
So I'd, uh, like to thank all that put in, uh, the amount of time and the, uh, uh, due diligence and, uh, um, going through the evaluation and the selection process for this RFP. So thank you, everyone, who, uh, who served in that capacity. We'll open up for any questions that any of the council members may have for either Scott or Preston or, or the representatives of Stockwell Firm, both John and David. Any questions?
Mayor, John De Kramer?
Yes, Scott.
Uh, just, uh, uh, for the sake of the public listening in, uh, for this recording, could either Scott or someone, uh, uh, explain what is involved in phase one? Do they know where we're at?
Okay, thank you, John. Scott, can you do that?
Yeah, so, uh, phase one, to start out, we'll be conducting some public input sessions where we'll want to hear from the public stakeholders, user groups, uh, in regards to what works with the existing facility, what they like about it, what they don't like, and what we want to see for potential future improvements. We'll go through, uh, some aquatic center programming exercises to talk about the individual features, how people access the site, uh, but also the mechanical nature of it. Uh, and, and work with city staff to understand from a mechanical standpoint how they want the new facility to function. Again, what works and what doesn't work, because we really want this design to be a reflection of the community. Uh, and so we'll, we'll go through those series of meetings. We'll have public meetings to get public input as well. We'll do a topographic survey of the site to determine, again, kind of where we need to have utility tie-in points, pedestrian access, vehicular access, bicycle access to the facility. Uh, we'll then also work with a geotechnical engineer on kind of underground exploratory, uh, items to see where our groundwater levels are at, uh, any sort of underdrains that we would need. Uh, from there, we'll develop a concept based on that background information from the community, uh, what we see from the site, and we'll develop a schematic design, uh, set of documents that will have plans, elevations, sections, we'll have a narrative, uh, and a cost estimate associated with that, uh, as well. From there, we'll then present that, uh, at another public meeting, again, because we want this re, designed to be a reflection and something that the community is excited about. Uh, and so after that public meeting, we'll make the necessary changes, present it to city council to then move forward, uh, with the design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good coverage of it.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, with, uh, great appreciation to the committee that worked to put this together, to review all the applicants and to come up with a recommendation, I'd like to move approval of the recommendation for the Marshall Aquatic Center Design Architecture and Engineering Services.
I would second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
Um, I would just like to add, in our discussion as a committee, this was consensus of the whole committee. You know, we went through these and the consensus came by the whole committee that Stockwell would be the best choice. So I just want to share that, that there's, it's, it's completely supported by everybody on the committee.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I just have, like, one question and one comment. Um, Scott was gracious enough to send me the, uh, results of the 2019 survey that they did. Uh, it's very informative, and I think the remainder of council probably would be interested if they haven't saved it, because I didn't, uh, and re, and getting that and reading through that, because it was very informative to me. I know there was only about 300 people that participated in this survey, but the general comments were a lot what was, was said tonight. My last question was about the $193,000. Was this in the budget for this year?
Sharon, you want to address that?
Um, no, because we would likely wrap this in into the entire project eventually, uh, if we move forward. And we have talked internally as a staff that, um, some of the initial expenses, uh, regarding architectural engineering, it would be, um, funded through some, um, reserves and existing funds, um, that we have obtained. I mean, we've, we did, uh, very well on a liquor store fund in 2020, and, um, we would eventually set up an account, of course, to, um, to pay the expenses out of this particular, for this particular contract.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to, uh, thank you, Scott, and thank you, John and David also. We look forward to, um, the next step in this, uh, input and planning process. We'll move then to agenda number 15, the water treatment plant softening, uh, enhancement project update. Um, so the, um, Jason, are you starting with this, or David, are you starting with this?
Yes, Mayor, I can, I can start this item.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so as a lot of us are probably beginning to be more aware of, um, and I guess I could start off by saying that David Shalkoff is in the room and present, uh, general manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities. We also have Bob Van Moore, our wastewater superintendent online as well. So when we get through this, and if there's some discussion points, we can certainly have everyone weigh in, and, and we've got all the, the proper authorities here, I think, so. Um, so as we know, the Marshall Municipal Utilities Water Treatment Plant Softening Enhancement Project that began in fall of 2019 is nearing completion. Um, for background, a major driver of this softening project is upcoming MPCA chloride or salt, uh, essentially salt, but chloride's limitation, uh, for our city of Marshall wastewater treatment facility. So in 2024, the wastewater treatment facility will be required to reduce... So in two thousand and twenty-four, the wastewater treatment facility will be required to reduce our discharge of chlorides into the Redwood River. Since chlorides cannot be removed through conventional wastewater treatment mechanical processes, the City of Marshall and MMU worked together years ago to study various options to reach our required limits in two thousand and twenty-four. Following analysis, it was determined that the most cost-effective and appropriate way to manage this issue was to further soften the water at our water treatment plant. So with the project nearing completion and the utility beginning to take the steps necessary to deliver softer water, the next step for us is to inform our public about the softer water that will be delivered and for us all to understand and agree on our process going forward. So included in your council packet was a public notice that we put together. City staff and MMU staff worked together to create this notice. Our intent would be to submit this notice in next month's utility billing to all of our water customers, all of our utility customers, really. The notice indicates that as of June first of two thousand and twenty-one, all water customers must adjust their water softener units to reflect an incoming water hardness of eight grains. The water delivered prior to June first was thirty-five grains hardness. So there needs to be these adjustments to everyone's softener units for the customers to realize benefits and save money on salt purchasing and also help the city meet our chloride restriction. In addition to this bill stuffer, the city and MMU would plan to utilize a lot of different methods of communicating with our customers. It'll be really important that we spend a lot of time and expend a lot of effort into reaching everyone and letting them know of the change. We'd use social media, the newspaper, radio, various different forms of media. Our wastewater department would plan to meet with all of our large industrial customers so we can reach that audience on a one-on-one basis. And public works staff intends to send out a mailer to all apartment building owners to ensure that they all receive the message. There's quite a few that live out of town. We just want to make sure that there's nobody getting missed in this message. It's the belief of city staff and MMU staff that our efforts of educating the public and the benefit of saving money on salt use will be enough to bring our chloride discharge into compliance. City staff believes that the reduction in salt use could be as much as seventy-five percent for each customer, and that's a pretty great incentive for our water customers to want to make an adjustment. Over the course of the next year, our wastewater department will continually monitor the chloride levels as the water comes in and leaves our wastewater treatment facility. We'll take some time, we believe, taking a year or so, to see how this works and to verify that we're getting compliance is a good path forward. We think that we have some time with the limit really coming into play in two thousand and twenty-four, that if for some reason we're not hitting our limits, we can talk at a later date about further programs and options and opportunities to help make sure that we're getting adjustments and we're getting the impact that we need. I think I've probably said enough. As I mentioned, David Shalkoff, our General Manager at Marshall Municipal Utilities is here, and Bob Van Moore as well, and maybe David, do you want to say a few words?
Oh, David? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council, I'm gonna, if you could see my face, maybe I'm not even, oh, there we go, I'm gonna take off my mask, you can see my face. So thank you very much for the time this evening to discuss this issue with you all. We have met multiple times with city staff to discuss next steps and how to approach our customers and citizens of Marshall on how to adjust their softeners. We believe there's great cost savings to be had, and if anybody has ever had to drag their salt bags into their basement, they realize that might be a nice thing to reduce that by seventy-five percent. So we're very excited about that. The water treatment plant is nearing completion, as has been said. We are at eight grams by June first. We want everybody to understand that, and we're pretty excited about the efficiencies of the plant. However, having said that, we still need a month to dial in the plant to make sure that all of the little bugs are out of the system, especially on the software side. It's a highly automated plant now. It was before, but now it is really, truly an automated marvel. The city MMU staff has been working for the last year and a half, literally thousands of man-hours to get this project run up and running on behalf of the city and MMU. We're pretty excited in this partnership to make this happen for our citizens and our customers. With that, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Before I do turn it back over, though, I would like to say that we're in concurrence with the city as far as implementation of notifications, letters, Facebook, websites, phone calls, frequently asked question lists. We believe that this incentive, which will, just the incentives of reducing the salt usage and the reduction in costs will be great enough to encourage our customers and our citizens to comply by adjusting their water softeners. We really believe that that is the way forward. As we move forward and we find out that we need to do more, we can adjust our program appropriately and make sure that we can come into compliance with the state mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Jason. Thank you also to Bob Van Moore, who's participating. I think this entire project, from the very start, the very beginning of the planning, was, represented an important partnership with the community, with the Marshall Municipal Utilities, with the City of Marshall, and our wastewater treatment facilities, all with the goal of really doing the right thing, and that was reducing the chloride loading into the Redwood River. The benefit of that also is that our residents, that our customers that are purchasing water will enjoy a higher quality of product that they're getting and will, of course, see the benefit of that. I would also say that I am impressed with the amount of planning on the educational efforts and the materials that have gone there, and certainly, we would encourage, you know, the public to take advantage of learning about this and learning as soon as possible, because there is an immediate financial benefit by reduction in the amount of softener salt that each of us purchase every year. So thank you for all of your efforts. I'll open up for any questions or discussion or suggestions that any member of the council has for either David or Jason or Bob.
Mr. Mayor, just one question. I'm not sure if Jason or David want to answer this. What if, I don't see it on your question list, but what if a person, are you expecting, anticipating calls and saying, can I get rid of my softener?
You'd like to take that, David, or would you like me?
Yeah, yes, I can, Mr. Mayor. That's okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, I have to say that it is going to be a personal preference that we will tell our customers and citizens that if they want to remove their water softener, that's entirely up to them. We will not be making this entirely soft water. We will not be delivering entirely soft water to the premise. Over the years, people have developed certain sensitivities, certain wants when it comes to soft water, and so we want to encourage people to say, if you want what you're feeling today into the future, then you need to keep your softener. So to answer that question, it's really on the responsibility of the owner of the softener. Personally, I will debate that with my family and my wife, but at the same time, with the reduction in salt usage and the, also, the less labor it is to fill my water softener, it's going to be a lot easier for us to say, yeah, we're going to keep it. So at the end of the day, we want to encourage people to make that personal choice, but at the same time, we also want them to know that their water is eighty percent more soft than it was before. And that's an important point to make to our consumers out there. We do have, and we have had, some rate increases, but the quality of water that you are now receiving or will receive by June first will be eighty percent less hard, which is amazing when you think about it.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add a couple of comments, I just want to reiterate, and everything that Dave said is one hundred percent correct, of course, but I would just add that all of our informational pieces are aimed at telling you to adjust your unit. We are not telling anyone what to do or to remove their unit. That's certainly not our place, as Dave suggested, it's a personal preference. But we really want to make sure that everyone is taking the time to adjust their units. It's very important to the city in meeting our goals on the wastewater end. It's also important to our customers for saving the money that they should be saving. So we're just trying to target that message of just go down there, give it a look. If you don't know how to adjust your softener, call one of your local water softening companies, call a local plumber, seek some help from someone who can help you and make those adjustments. It's very critical as we move forward.
Thank you, Jason. Other input, other questions? Go ahead, John.
A couple of comments, and actually, Jason addressed one of my comments, but I'd like to stress a little bit more of the questions that I've been hearing is, okay, great, this is coming, how do I adjust my water softener? Who do I call? And I think that's just exactly what you said, Jason, maybe supplement to the sheets that you're putting in, you know, with phone numbers. Do you call, call again, do you call Jason Anderson, which you probably don't want to do? You know, that's, those are the questions I think that we need to address as well, because those are the questions that I've received already. And then just in a follow-up with a comment that David Shalkoff mentioned, I just point out, most of the water softeners should have a bypass switch on it. So if somebody's questioning whether they can remove their softener, they can easily bypass it for a month or a period of time and just see, okay, am I, you know, do I like the water that I'm getting, or do I need to go back and run my softener? That's an easy way of finding out if it's adequately softened for your use. And last thing is just, this is a great project to have wrapping up and to get to this point. We've been talking about this and working on it and trying to get funding for quite a few years, and I think the number I keep remembering is about, I think it's about five tons of salt that goes into the river on a daily basis. It's good to put an end to that, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or input?
Mr. Mayor, Don?
Go ahead, Don.
Just, I guess, a general question, overview of, you know, pollution control in the state of Minnesota and the requirements that are made upon cities that have water systems. I would think that we are not the only one, you know, I haven't been around in the know in quite some time, but I'm sure we are not the only city that is having to comply with this mandate that's coming down. And I'm sure all the ways to look at this issue were looked at, but I, just a half a minute on, maybe from Jason, on, you know, is every city in the state looking at this and have this issue, or just people out here in like Western and Southwest Minnesota that have hard water?
This is, yeah, I was just gonna say, I think I'd kick that over to Bob Van Moore. He's kind of a resident expert on current wastewater standards, so go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, this is really not even a Minnesota issue. It's a national issue that's come into light. Just in the southwest central portion of the state, I know there's St. Peter, Morris, Pipestone, Sherburne, they've all had limits, chloride limits put on them already. There's industrial facilities that have permits put on them. It's not solely Marshall, and it's not solely Minnesota. We'll see in the future that there's going to be, this is a hot topic now, and it will be continued to added to new permits as facilities come up for their NPDS permit renewals.
We should add, however, we did, we were fortunate, we did benefit from the PSEG grant of seven million dollars from the state of Minnesota, and that was based on a ranking criteria of those communities that were in most need of upgrading, based on not only the scope of users in the community, both residential and commercial and industrial, but also where our discharge goes, in our case, to the Redwood River. So that really put us very high on the list, and so we were fortunate that we were able to get the legislative authority for that seven million dollar PSEG grant.
Minnesota's actually been targeting priority watersheds, and you're, I guess, fortunate or unfortunate enough to be in a target watershed, and one of the major contributors or discharges to that watershed, which really gave us some high ranking to get the grant, which really helped us down the road. So it's good news, bad news together, which is giving us a good result.
Any other input? If not, this was for information items. No formal action is taken. We appreciate the efforts that staff has made to go the next step in education, and we fully support that. Very good.
Thank you. This is another perfect example, Mr. Mayor, of MMU and the city partnering for a goal and accomplishing a goal together.
Very good. Jason, anything more you needed?
Mayor, this is great, thank you.
Okay, we'll then move then to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. This is the United Community Action Partnership Transit ADA Bus Access. We have the final acceptance of the project closeout. Jason, anything you want to add here?
No, Mayor, project was completed last year. We just had some paperwork things to tidy up. We are just finaling this out formally, and nothing to add.
Hey, any questions on this? If not, is there a motion?
I move motion.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, and we'll note that Dr. Meister has joined us.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Consider the Annual Adoption of the Resolution Declaring Towns of Summer as a Community Festival. Are there any questions about this?
Move the resolution.
Motion by Craig?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle will move to a vote.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Abstain.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. As we move to Agenda Item Number Eighteen, I will abstain from the discussion and vote, and will pass the gavel to President Pro Tim, John De Kramer.
Yes, this evening, on Item Eighteen, the action is to call for a public hearing regarding a proposed property tax abatement at five-one-two Continental Street. Not sure if either Kyle or Sharon anymore on this subject?
I move for resolution or calling for the public hearing regarding proposed property tax abatement at five-twelve Continental Street.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle will call for a vote.
Mayor Burns?
Abstain.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll turn the gavel back over to Mayor Burns.
And that motion did pass. Thank you, John, for turning the gavel back over. That's, yes, that's right. yes, that's right. As a point of parliamentary procedure, you wouldn't have had to do that. So Agenda I have number 19, Consider the Appointments of Various Boards Commissions. So earlier, the council has met in special session two weeks ago, as well as earlier this evening, and based on interviews from applicants that were received at that time and conducted at that time, the, I'll make the following recommendations, that Jim Tate be appointed to the Adult Community Center Commission for a term that will expire May 31st, 2023, that Ron Helgerson be appointed to his second term on the Airport Commission, that term will expire May 31st, 2024, and that Mr. Dana Larson be appointed to the Police Advisory Board for his first term, and that term would expire May 31st, 2024. Offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I have number 20. Agenda I have number 20 is Commission Board Liaison Reports. I'll keep my part brief from the Southwest Regional Development Commission Revolving Loan Fund. Did meet this, this past week and approved a couple of loans, both within the revolving loan fund, the traditional as well as the COVID-19 revolving loan fund. And we are looking at a May 6th application deadline for the original terms on the COVID RLF, and we're well positioned to utilize the full $1.48 million grant that was received for that purpose. The Fire Relief Association held a quarterly meeting also last week, and it was actually a failed meeting due to some technology issues. As I think I reported before, the, the management of the advisor has retired and now it's being managed out, individual out of Mankato. And there was difficulty with some of the members connecting by Zoom because of some technology, and there was the, the presenter wasn't able to share a screen and, you know, so, so that was unfortunate, but we do have the written report. With that, Craig, we'll move.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Nothing to report.
Um, Don?
My two committees have not met as well, Mr. Mayor.
And John?
MMU did meet, and thank you for those that were able to attend the audit review. They did receive the audit at the meeting. And then the other action that was taken at the meeting was the resumption of the pre-pandemic service disconnects. So as people, rather than falling further behind, they are starting, will be starting actually in July, informing them, customers that have not paid for some time, that they would be disconnected, but as well provide them with the information as to where to get the assistance if they've been affected by COVID, how to get the assistance to get payments made on their utility bill. Just a one item I'd like to point out in the, regarding the audit, discussion we had at our last meeting, I made a comment that I want to correct. I had made a comment that I thought the number, the value of MMU to the city was in the area of about $5 million. In reality, the value that a city, that the city has, based on the audit numbers within the, I believe it was 2019, was 11, just over $11 million of value to the city of Marshall. And that comes from the difference, the lower electrical rates as compared to the cooperatives surrounding the city, and as well as the payment in lieu of taxes that are made. Also point out that within the audit, that the bond remaining at MMU is in the vicinity of just over $14 million. And if you're looking at a, you know, a $14 million bond or loan that you're paying back with a return on investment, that in one year, we get 11 million back to the city in savings, that's a pretty good return on investment. So going on to my other group, the EDA did meet, and part of the discussion at the EDA was the sale of the lot that we approved, the house to be moved onto the lot. So that sale will continue. And beyond that, it was basically preliminary discussions on some of the emergency funding that's becoming available, as well as discussion on vacant buildings. And any more, I'll leave it to Dr. Meister to add in. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. We'll move then. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was busy the last couple of weeks. The Adult Community Center met, was my first meeting with them. As we all know, they closed in March of 2020 because of COVID. They reopened in January. During that closure time, they managed to stay in contact with their members via email, telephone calls, whatever the case be, to keep them up to speed. They voted or took action that they were not going to charge for dues in 2021, and I just honored the dues that mostly paid in 2020. They are looking at some, a couple of repair items in the Adult Community Center itself, the, looking at some stalls, walls in the bathrooms, and additional space that they're looking for an office, and then also a few windows to be replaced or repaired. So that, those projects will be coming up. Visit Marshall CVB met, they had a good, good feedback from the community. The ice dogs were very happy with the, with the celebration, I should say, the participation from the city of Marshall and everything else. They want to commend all the, all the community members, those that were involved in any way, shape, or form for hosting them and making them feel welcome. They're not sure yet, but there's a possibility they could come back for a game or two next year. They also want to compliment Alex and the great job by Studio One. He said, we've never seen such a fantastic situation. And so hats off to Alex and all his crews. They talked about a Trey Day Lance, or Trey Lance Day celebration, but, and that's coming up Thursday with the NFL draft. But because of NFL restrictions, they couldn't really hold a celebration, so they're going to do a pub crawl instead. So that's going to be, and it's exciting for the city of Marshall if they have a local individual get drafted by the NFL. Hotel side of things, they said the March and April has been good. The biggest problem that the hotels are having at the present time is finding help. And I think that's probably shared by a number of businesses around town. So otherwise, it was a good month for CVB. My last meeting was with Community Transit and, and just got brought up to speed with everything. And the biggest problem they're having there is, is the licensing of drivers when they have to apply for the CDL. They had one getting tested up in Wilmer and things like that, just because they have to make an appointment. So we're looking at some different things that they're getting up to speed on some, all the things. They talked about the bus shelter graphics. I guess they have a couple of wildlife issues and a couple of them. So they're talking about putting some graphics on a couple sides of those shelters. They gave us a report on ridership for the last couple of months. And even though it's, you know, last year with, because of COVID was down, it looks like they were heading in the right direction with ridership. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. And Jim?
My meetings, my committees did not meet, except of course, City Hall met last Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm not sure which day. It's slowly wrapping up. There is one more, and I know, Dr. Meister, you like to hear this, but there's one more change order that is coming through. We are right now working on different numbers or different options on the change order because of some stuff that we, as the City Hall Committee, felt that we shouldn't be charged for. So that, that's getting worked through. If CDC guidelines allows, we should be able to meet in City Hall for our first meeting in June. Of course, we'll take our advice from Dr. Meister on that, and hopefully he'll allow us to get together. But if you go in City Hall, it's looking really nice. I even ran into Ray Hendrickson. I was up there Friday, and, and Ray does know how to run a vacuum. He just like to share that with all of our citizens and his wife, that Ray was up there vacuuming carpet Friday afternoon. I thought that looked very nice. So, but City Hall is coming together very nicely. I believe, and Sharon, they told me again, May 3rd or May 4th, it will get turned over to us. They're still saying that. So that's my update there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Craig, let's start, and you're in. Steve?
Well, as Jim said, you know, COVID is still alive and well. Make sure you get your vaccines. We're actually running out of, we have a plethora of vaccines, Marshall and the state of Minnesota. If you want your vaccine, you're 16 years old, of age or older, there's no reason you cannot get the vaccine. So please go out and get the vaccine. Otherwise, stay safe. And let's get this thing down with vaccinations, so we can get back to a more normal state of normal. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. Don?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Um, Jim?
I have nothing.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Jason still on the line? Jason? Anyway, one of my items I wanted to bring up is the alleyway between 5th and 6th Street by, off of the State Farm. It's in pretty rough shape. I see the city did put some patches in there, but I forgot to bring it up at our last meeting. But I don't know what the proper procedure is, maybe to take a look at that alleyway and maybe do something on a more permanent basis. But be careful if you're driving through that alleyway, because you could put out your alignment real quick. The other question I have is that Dennis, I haven't heard from you for a long time regarding the Maha Agreement. I know they've had a couple of tough years, just wondering, but I think the last time we talked, I think that probably the agreement was going to be expiring here, and probably, if not this year, maybe next year. So just want an update on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dennis, you want to address that now, or in your part?
There's nothing happening on that at the present time. It is just at a standstill right now, Russ.
Thank you.
And John?
I have nothing.
Okay, then we will, for my part, let me just say a couple of things. Tomorrow at noon, City Administrator Hanson and I will be delivering the State of the City address. Sharon has put a substantial amount of work into preparing for that. So thank you, Sharon, for, for that. And I'll, I'll do some prep later, prior to the meeting, meeting. As Councilmember LaBatt mentioned, you know, the, the Trey Lance Day Thursday, I think we should all be proud that the Lance family are representing this community well. There's been a substantial amount of state and even broader attention that he has brought our community, and that makes us all proud. So we wish him all the best. With that, let's move then to Staff Report.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Did you get any information on the census information that was just released? I was just kind of curious if anybody looked at, if you looked that up or whatever?
Yeah, so thank you. I'll actually let Kyle address that too. But the, the release that happened was on the apportionment for congressional representation. The, I believe the more individual community is going to be maybe as early as September of this, of this year before that's released.
State, county, and municipality data will be released on or before September 30th. So we have a little while longer to wait yet for our individual or municipality population number.
So the, the fact that Minnesota numbers were better than expected, we would hope that, that our population numbers reflect the accuracy of the count here locally too. So good question, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Staff Report, Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, the City Hall is progressing. This is really on their schedule that they stated this would be the last week for them to get most of the interior work done. I'm a little skeptical, and that is based on some feedback I got from some of the committee members, and then also walking through it today. Is it critical for city staff or operations? No. We can adjust backwards a little bit and make other modifications. Our kind of target date is the first Tuesday after Memorial Day to be operational. And if that doesn't occur, we can, we could make some, some adjustments as well. But they are working steadily towards the end. We will have a pretty lengthy punch list on some things that need to be corrected. And it'll take the month of May, I think, to, to correct them. But I don't think it's, it's really their, their schedule that said May 3rd. We've kind of got the month of May open on, in terms of operation. So, and the only other update is, I, as the mayor indicated, just kind of prepping for State of the City. A lot of it, we kind of know off the top of our heads, and, but it's just kind of putting it together. And, and hopefully it goes over pretty well. I do want to bring in a staff person on my report, and that's Annette Storm, Administrative Services Director. She wants to ask you a little bit about timing of a debt bonding discussion, work session she'd like to have. And that's a follow up to some earlier discussions, and then also just a short, brief update on the audit. So, Annette?
Thank you, Administrator Hanson. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Sharon had indicated, I will like to give just a quick update on the 2020 audit status. We did have two auditors on site for two days last week, which was really nice because it was our second year with them, and we were actually able to have a couple of them on site. Everyone else worked remote the rest of the week. We did get a little bit of feedback that they're making very good progress, and they hope to kind of give us a more specific update at the end of this week as to some of their discussion points. So we're hopeful maybe in the next few weeks to have a draft financial statement, so we could hopefully have it to council maybe early June is kind of our target date right now. I also wanted to reach out and just get a little bit of feedback for a debt and kind of a financial plan kind of update and kind of where we're at and where we've been. I know some of, before some of the council meetings in May, there, there isn't any available time. So I wanted to get some feedback as to availability. If anyone would prefer to maybe have it over the lunch hour, we're thinking maybe about an hour is what we'll need, or if we prefer to keep it in the evening. And if there's any specific questions that I can prepare for, if you could reach out to me sometime in the next few weeks, so I can prepare for that. But mainly, I kind of wanted to get a feel for, kind of the time of day that the council members would prefer for this type of meeting.
Anyone want to give a preference at this point? I'm flexible on time of day personally.
Noon hour would probably be better for me, just off my head.
I prefer evenings.
I'm with, I'm with Councilmember LaBatt. I prefer evenings.
I prefer evenings too.
After 4:00?
Okay.
I'm hoping the time, doesn't matter.
So, Annette, maybe you could work with Kyle and maybe send out like a doodle poll and with some suggested meeting times.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And you could also kind of indicate the duration, you know, if it's a two-hour meeting or a four-hour meeting. So, we may be able to combine that with the audit report, too. Okay, anything else, Annette?
That's it for me. That's it for me.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it for me too, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll move to, uh, Director of Public Works, City Engineer Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I can just give a brief update on some construction projects. You may have noticed on North First Street that the street surface was reclaimed by the contractor, uh, yesterday, I believe it was. So it's a kind of a gravel type of surface. So that project is, is starting. You also see the materials on site. Um, Merritt Outfall Project, the piping is all installed from the, uh, rural drainage ditch back through our pond or to our pond. So that project is, uh, progressing nicely. They'll move into some ditch grading work next. Um, South First Street from last year, there was some holdover work with sidewalk work that remained and some seeding work. So they're starting the sidewalk work now. They've been on site for a couple of days. Uh, South Fourth Street and South First will both see some seeding work over the next, uh, week or so. So things are starting to get moving. It's early and that's a, it's a good thing. So we should see a lot of activity this year in town. Um, to address Councilman LaBatt's, uh, comment about the alley between Fifth and Sixth, you know, I have been in communications with the property owner on that alley as well. I'm, I'm assuming likely the same person that reached out to you. But, you know, we have done some minimal patching work. We can maybe do a little more patching when the plant opens up, the Batuminus plant, uh, we can use, maybe do some more lasting improvements there. But, you know, ultimately that alley is in really bad shape and I guess from my standpoint, I've been sort of waiting and I have told this property owner as well, that if the alley owners petition a project, we could certainly do an improvement. I believe our current assessment policy identifies that alley improvements are 100% assessed to adjacent property owners. So, um, looking for that. If, if they'd like to petition a project, we can certainly help them out a little more with that. But we, our, uh, street superintendent is well aware, uh, we've been in communications and, and we'll look at it and see if there's some more work that we can do. That's all I've got.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Jason. Jason, what was the size of that tree they took down on, uh, First Street this morning?
Very, very large.
It had to be, it had to be at least six foot in diameter, didn't it?
It's very big. It was in the way of some sewer work that we're going to be doing there and, um, I think they had some issues with a gas line breaking there as well as they were cutting that down. So a little bit of a snafu this morning, but it's an extremely large tree.
They probably thought we were having some kind of an earthquake or something when that thing hit the ground.
Yeah, if you drive by and take a look at the stump that remains, there's still a lot of work there.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For every project that Jason initiates, so there's, um, an amount of construction review documents that need to be done and quite a lot of that has been happening. And then I've had significant screen time and phone calls with city staff in anticipation of several agreements that are being modified or drafted, including a concession service agreement. We're working with the local vendor to provide, um, some food and beverage service out at the athletic ball fields, out at the Red Baron Arena. That's a, a new event, hopefully, or a new agreement we hope to be bringing to council, first meeting in May. Um, they're looking at an amendment to some of the concessions at the Legion Field Ballpark. Um, and I've just discussed with, uh, Jason Anderson today, there's an amendment to the fixed base operator agreement out at the airport. So we're also hoping to bring that to council next meeting. And then following up on the EDA, we're having a special meeting on Tuesday, May 4th to consider the sale of lot. We have to have a public hearing on that. So that'll be a, hopefully to approve the sale of the lot so that house can be moved in. And, and, and it continues. There just seems to be daily document review that's going on. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Jason, for Dennis? If not, uh, the remaining items, you have the information items as well as the upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward this evening?
Move we adjourn?
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Don to adjourn. Discussion? If not, by voice vote, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.